At this time, six P M. I go ahead and call the order for a work session. The first item will be a presentation from Texas Community Group and Mr. Phil.
Your presentation of Mr. Danny Barrett, you can come on up to the podium if you would. To remind the council, it wasn't too long ago, just a couple of weeks ago or so, that we had a work session on code enforcement. And I remember that the council asked the code enforcement staff, what is it that we can do to assist you and our staff? So I thought about that and I met with Brandon Purdue, they had our collections and our real estate, and talked to them about that. So they introduced me to Danny Barrett and he believes, and we believe, and we met with code enforcement, he may be able to help us with some of these abandoned properties and that kind of thing. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Danny and I guess you've got the clicker there, right? For your, okay.
Mayor, council, glad to be here. My name is Danny Barrett, I am with Texas Communities Group. For the last thirty-five years, I've also worked with the Purdue Brandon Law Firm that does your delinquent property tax collection. We created Texas Communities Group to further extend our services towards our city clients. There are some portions in the tax code that we feel like, that if we use those properly, they extend over into helping our cities with a couple of issues, code enforcement being one of those. So with that, if you don't mind, I'll take you through this PowerPoint, just kind of keep me on track and let you know what we do. What we're talking about here with Halton City is helping you with three problems, trust properties, abandoned properties, and then we have our property database that will make available to your city staff. First thing I want to talk about is trust properties. Trust properties are properties that have gone through the tax foreclosure process, they've gone to the courthouse steps to be auctioned off, there's a minimum bid at that point in time. If there are no minimum bids received there, you now own those properties in trust with the other entities, county, school, and the other participating tax entities. One of the things we feel like is trust properties tend to be a little bit of a burden on our cities. You generally maintain those, if any work is going to be done to safeguard or demolish those properties, you get to do it without a lot of cost participation. So one of the things we do is to try to manage those properties and market those properties fairly aggressively. We have an online bid system where people can look through your inventory of properties, review those, and make a bid twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We use property signage, as you can see there, we use social media as much as we can. What we try to do is to increase your buyer pool, those people that know about those properties, we want them, we want more. We try to bring back the curtain a little bit on buying trust properties and what that means. So all of our materials, our online site, we even do catalogs, they'll have a little bit about trust properties and what you're buying and how you go about it. We've had really great success with that. We've sold over fifteen hundred parcels in the last two and a half, three years, we generate about one point two million dollars that we've brought back to our communities through those funds. One of the things I think has been overlooked is, on resale properties, you can take off the top of resales, your cost of maintaining that property over the last year, six months, two years, however long it's been, safeguarding, mowing, maintenance, even marketing those properties. So we help you take advantage of that as best we can. The next, one of the things we've worked on is abandoned property. We call them real property tax warrants. TCG staff will work with your city staff, many of those that I met earlier this afternoon. But what we do is we take the tax row, the delinquent tax row, match it up with your liens that you have recorded, we kind of cross-reference those properties with the delinquent tax row, where you have active liens. Then, when we have that list, if we can prove that those properties are vacant with no residence, or no signs of ownership in the last twelve calendar months, if it has five years of delinquent taxes, or three years with a municipal lien, we can move those a little quicker to foreclosure through a posting process and the real property tax warrant process. What that does, all of those properties that meet those requirements, we can move them in one action, and it usually takes about two to three months before we have a sale. Those have been a really great tool for our communities that we work with, where they're already having problems with those properties, mowing them maybe more than one time, they're dealing with those properties over and over in code enforcement, we can oftentimes go in there and actually change the ownership of those and get it to an existing owner, somebody who's paying the taxes, somebody who's maintaining the property and maybe going to use that property for economic good. So that's our real property tax warrants. Just a little bit about it, the properties that are in your city limits, again, it's the preceding five years of delinquent taxes, or three years with a municipal lien recorded. A couple of the other things we do on the management side of trust properties, in problem properties, we have a phone application that we'll make available to city staff, to where if there's a problem, maybe they're getting complaints on that property, or they're driving by in their normal course of business, they see an eyesore, they can stand in front of it, take a picture of it and hit send. It immediately comes to us, we pull the GPS address of it, go research the ownership, and we can help make a best process decision on what we can do with that property. Maybe it's already in tax foreclosure and our staff in Purdue have it three, four months from foreclosure, you might not want to spin a lot of wheels on code enforcement if it's going to sell in the next few months. Or we see that it meets real property tax warrant requirements, and we can slip it into the next tax warrant and we can handle it that way. If we don't have an option that way, then it would certainly be a code enforcement property that your code department can handle. And what we've seen, when we kind of divide things that way, our code departments have come a little more efficient, they're working on properties where taxes are paid, somebody's alive, and at least writing a check each year for the tax payment of that property, and you tend to have better luck and success in bringing those property owners into compliance. So that's our smartphone app we make available to them. Talked a little bit about our best process method, we try to slip it into one of those corridors that we can move the property through most efficiently. Our goal is to find the longest, best-term resolution for that property, whatever it may be. And then again, just kind of management of the properties, we log every trust property that you'll have, we can show you where they are, where they're located map-wise, and click on each one of those on our mapping tool, look at the property, you can make a bid on that property that way as well, but we maintain that inventory where you can see what's happening on your properties that you co-own with your other entities. And with that, I'll be glad to take any questions that you may have.
Council, you have any question?
Ricky Brown, Castle.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Barrett, for being here. It's very interesting, going back, I suppose you were talking, all the things we can put on top of the sale, I suppose like when we have to demo a house, that we can get right off the top for demolition?
Yes, yes.
On this, on the taxes, taking property for taxes, how do, how do we get ahead, if it's been already sold on the courthouse steps for property taxes, how do we get ahead of that?
I hope I'm understanding your question, and answer it the best I can. How do we get ahead of it? When you have a property, to me, that's in trust, one, it goes to exempt status, so you know, don't have anybody actively paying any tax revenues to you. What we try to do is market that property and try to get it sold as quickly as we can. You would maintain your ability as a council to approve each and every sale that we do, our job would be to bring you a qualified purchaser, then your job is to approve or deny that bid before you. But as far as getting ahead on that piece of property, if you have costs involved with that property, like I said, maybe you've had it in trust for a year, and you've mowed it two or three times and you have those costs, or you had to go safeguard the property and put up some plywood on the windows, so folks can't get in and cause damage, you can get that money back off the top.
And then secondly, on property, when something's been foreclosed on property taxes, doesn't the owner have like ten years to come back and you can charge, I mean, I know there's people that's kind of made a cottage industry of going and buying this tax foreclosed stuff, and then, and then the poor guy down the road comes back in six or seven years and they get to charge them a pretty good little interest rate, and like I said, that's kind of turned into a cottage industry going and buying this foreclosed, tax foreclosed property.
Right.
Isn't there like ten years?
There is, it's called the right of redemption on any type of foreclosure, whether it's a regular tax foreclosure, or if it would have been foreclosed through the tax warrant process, there's two dates on there to remember. If it's a homestead property at the time of foreclosure, that period is two years, the prior ownership can redeem or force a buyback of that property. They have to pay the purchaser the money they were out, plus twenty-five percent the first year, or fifty percent during the second year, plus any cost that they would have of maintaining that property. If it had a hole in the roof and they patched the roof, they could get that cost back as well. Or if it wasn't homestead property, and then it's only a six-month period of time.
So as a city, could we, do we get into that, charging these nice fees, if we took possession of the property, took deed to the property?
As far as fees, I'm not sure I'm following you on what type of fee.
Again, what did you say, it's like the first year's twenty-five percent?
That's the redemption fee.
Yes, sir.
And that's payable to whoever purchased that property. You only have a redemption if that property has sold, either at the tax sale or in a resale manner.
Would they?
And that fee goes to the purchaser, who bought it at the tax sale.
Right. Which, are we going to be in, are we going to be in the position to purchase this property?
You could be at the tax sale and purchase it just like anybody else could, yes, sir.
Do you guys get into that end of it?
No, we do not.
Okay, you're strictly just management?
Yes.
Okay. Very interesting, very interesting. Thank you, sir, thank you for your time.
Take your gus, Brown, Castle, Benzen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here, Mr. Barrett.
You're welcome.
I'm very excited about this, the prospect of it. So let me clarify with our new city manager, Rex Phelps. This is a staff recommendation, this is one, what they're recommending?
Yes, that'd be correct.
There, I've got a couple of clarification questions if I could, for me.
Okay.
I've got a, I'll wait, if you want me to wait or ask him now.
Okay. So is this percentage-based or flat fee with your company?
It is a flat fee-based.
Okay. And I did understand you to say you've done fifteen hundred of these in the last, how many years?
About two and a half to three years of active selling trust properties.
And so how long have you been doing this?
We started Texas Communities Group in February of fourteen. The first year was mostly a pilot project. Actually, I started the business on my own, I felt like there was a need for our cities, and I thought there was some opportunity there to help out. This was started out in West Texas for very small communities that didn't have a whole lot of services or, or resources. And so I like to say it's successful, it's at least got here. About two years ago, the firm, Purdue Brandon, bought a majority interest of the company, and since then, we've, with their marketing and word of mouth, it's grown quite a bit.
Well, that's exciting to me, because we want to help the other citizens who are in the area. So did I understand you to say that it's two to three months? Is there like a turnaround on this, once you take it?
If you do a tax warrant, that process, from the time we get the information with city staff and identify which properties do meet those requirements, there's a posting requirement that takes ten days, usually we post it for longer than that, our process is usually about post it for a month, then make the, the firm makes the application for the warrant with the court, and then judge signs it hopefully, and you're advertising for tax sales. So it's a very shortened process for specifically abandoned and vacant properties.
Good. The last thing I'd like to ask you is, do you happen to have any estimated increase from other cities that you've worked with, like what, they're being saved, not counting the maintenance or the code fees, but just?
You know, what we've seen, what we've been able to do in our cities is, we charge a flat fee and we don't charge a lot, this wasn't done to retire and go to Cosmell or something like that, this was done to cover our extra cost of work. And I think what we proposed here, Halton, is a twenty-five hundred dollar fee, if, with the first six months free, just to see if you like the service. We want to be here, we want to be involved in the metroplex in Tarrant County, and this is a great opportunity for us to prove it on a little larger scale.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barrett. I submit to the city manager.
Yes, Mr. Barrett, I just want you to explain for the audience, you said the cost, we'd get the cost off the top, and that's, you mean that we get that before we divide what's left up with the other taxing entities, is that correct?
Yes, on a resale, if you have costs that you've undertaken, as I said, for safeguarding or general maintenance, maybe you've mowed, gone and cleaned up the property, or say in the future, we see a property that we feel is too distressed for rehab, and it needs to come down during that period of trust ownership, and you get a contractor and they come demolish the structure, you can get that off the top. Now, can you get all of it? You know, if you have five thousand dollars worth of work and we can only sell that property, our highest bid is four thousand, you're going to get that four thousand, you'll get up to that, that cost level that you have invested in that property.
And then, would you explain inter-local agreements, how you help with that?
Okay. Where we've started out, some of our West Texas counties, and it's kind of grown with us, cost participation, which is one of the things I mentioned as far as trust properties, and one of the things we felt like maybe the city sometimes gets shorted in that process, is maintaining those properties. What we did was go into the other entities and ask for an inter-local agreement to assign the resale proceeds to the city where that property is located. And what that does is allows them to participate in the cost, if you own property, there's a cost with ownership, but it allows them to participate in the cost of ownership of these trust properties without having to dip into their budget of their own. And so they're just assigning their portions of those proceeds to the city. We can pursue that, if you'd like to, as Halton City, if they'd like us to work with your entities and present that information, we'll be glad to. We've had a pretty high rate of getting those approved, I think of all the ones we've proposed, I think we've only had two school districts, didn't say no to it. That doesn't stop us from getting, getting the cost off the top, but it's been very successful. I think most, most governmental entities know there's sometimes an issue with trust properties and are pretty willing to participate.
Thank you, Castle, bro.
Yeah, Mr. Barrett, you mentioned you had an app, and so when somebody snaps a picture of a piece of property and says, hey, need to look at this, does that integrate with our, I guess we're using gov.gov or something like that, or code, yeah, so does that, will that integrate with the mygov services, so the code enforcement would have a direct feed of?
It does not at this time.
Okay, so how would that, how would that notification get to our code enforcement people?
What we do when we get what we call a camera property, so a city, you know, will wake up and we'll see that we got eleven camera properties that day, we research each one and we kick it back to whoever sends that information in, we can tag, you know, what phone camera sends that information to us. And so we'll put, if you have a code officer and he sends us five pictures, usually we're in about a twenty-five hour.
Is that app for code enforcement, or is it app for citizens?
We would like it to be city staff.
Okay, city staff, so, okay, that's your target audience.
We have talked to some cities about just making it available to their citizens, and, you know, you're talking, you know, twenty-one thousand people having access to that, and lord knows what kind of pictures we might all get. So we've just kind of settled that for the council and.
Okay, so it's aimed at the city staff, so, so they're out on a code enforcement complaint that somebody put into our website, and then they snap a picture and then you would do your research?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the tracking of the costs, so I guess that would be the city, you know, we have vendors that go out and mow properties and things like that, we would track it, and then how would we tie that into the database, your database?
Yes, you would need to track those costs on yourself, yourselves, we would give you ideas and suggestions and ways to do that, and then as we're marketing those properties, when we list them, they'll, you know, the city staff will see every piece of property before we put it up for sale.
But there's no, there's no integration between finance or whoever tracking to that specific piece of property that?
As far as, you know, we would see all of your costs involved. So when we have parcel A, we would see that, okay, there was two, three hundred dollar mowing charges, whatnot on there, so we would have all of that stored in our information.
We would have to provide that, yes, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Castle, bro.
Thank you again, Mayor. One more question, Mr. Barrett, and on this, would you even have a percentage of the properties that are bought back by the original owner, the deeded owner? And the reason I just, I'm just real, someone spoke to us not long ago, and there were some chances we could make some monies on fees, and I can't remember what it was, I'm just real conscientious of us being in the money-making business on the backs of the citizens on something like this.
Right.
So what, what would be the percentage of the original deeded owner coming back and buying, and then they'll look at it and go, oh my lord, the city's making a ton of money just for me to get my property, and I don't want us to be in that position.
Right. No, the redemption doesn't happen very often. Just, just very rare. Now, we've, we've had it come up, and we, we had a tax sale on the first Tuesday of this month, and we have redemption there, we process that. They pay back what the purchaser bid on that piece of property, and the redemption fee goes to that purchaser, I don't know how revenues can be generated off of that. The revenues that we talk about are when you do have a resale, those monies, what we do, especially if we do the inter-local agreement, those are dedicated funds for cleanup of trust properties, and that's to be what that money is used for. And that's to be what that money is used for. But redemption doesn't happen...
Very often.
Yeah. Probably one percent of the time. I mean, it's just very rare.
Okay. There again, thank you very much for being here.
You're welcome.
Council Salt.
I also want to thank you for being here. I think this is something that we really need to address. But based on what you had said about city staff needs to be the ones to use this app to get this information to your company. So, and this may be directed to Rex or Sedana or Glenna. But wouldn't we have to have a, an internal process? Establish an internal process for how this is all going to operate to even report to this company? Because he said not citizens. It would be city staff that would be reporting these properties to his company.
Right. Well, we already have code enforcement. We already have a process. They would just, they would just forward information to him to work separately for us, but, but to give advice and different ways to handle a property, for example. But we already have a lien list on every property that we've, we've dealt with. We know, they already have access to that. Because they work with Brandon Purdue. So I don't think they would have to do anything different inside. Now, I do, I do think that Councilman Grohl's question about integration could make it even more efficient and maybe in time, because this is something new, but maybe in time that we could look at that. That was an interesting comment that he had made or suggestion. So, you know, we'll look at ways to improve it. But it would be our code enforcement and probably sometimes our police officers would be sending this kind of information. And of course, you know, inside with our liens.
Okay. All right, thank you.
It really just kind of becomes a communication tool. Hey, we're working on this piece of property. We've got complaints on it or I saw it. Is there anything that you can tell us about this? We'll go to our property records and maybe we've already had success collecting taxes on it. We know who paid it. Here's their phone number. You can direct your code enforcement notices and letters to that address.
Okay, thank you.
Council Thompson.
This is just a real quick question. In comparison, I know with probably residential, it might be handled differently than commercial. Commercial, I think, would be a much faster pace with, is that what you find or there's no difference?
You know, it depends. And you could probably talk to your code department and they'll give you some opinions about issues with commercial as opposed to residential. But really, on the warrant side, on the real property side, it's a matter of tax years and is the property being used by the owner? Are they there? Are they operating a business from it? Or is it just a building they bought four years ago and they've done nothing with it? So regardless of residential or commercial, our standards are, you know, does it meet the tax requirement? And then does it meet a vacancy requirement?
Okay. That's kind of what I thought, just to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Thompson. I ask you a question. Is your corporation state-wide or federal-wise or city-wise? Like operate in the city, state or federal?
We have a handful of counties that we work through the county commissioners court. Actually, we're hired to them. Couple of places where there's no, no incorporated city there. Borden County, for instance. I don't know if any of you have heard of Gale, Texas, USA. But there's no incorporated city there. So we work it through the county. But predominantly, most of your trust issues, most of your problem properties are within city limits. So most of our work is geared towards cities.
In Tarrant County, is Halton City first one you approached? Or you already done business with other city at work?
Halton City is our first Metroplex client that we would work for.
Okay, then I bet you, you have, have you talked to the commissioner court?
No, not yet, no.
Yeah. And because I believe like most of the title of the land belongs to Tarrant County. And that, that's just my question.
Right.
And...
And I think you're looking at a couple of trust properties later on on your agenda here. You're an owner of those trust properties.
Let me ask you, where this map came from? What's county?
I believe that is, it might be, oh, I think that's Stamford, Texas. Yeah, I see Stamford there.
And this many demolished property in the little area lots?
Yeah, yes, sir. Jones County is a county located right north of Abilene, Texas. It's got City of Anson, City of Stamford, City of Hamlin. I think there's a Holly. This was the second place that we went to work. They had a total of, our Midland office worked the delinquent tax records for Jones County. And we weren't really making the needle move like we wanted it to. And our attorney there called me and I'd been espousing this Texas Communities Group idea. And he said, what can we do this delinquent role? And we got to looking at it. They had four hundred-plus trust properties in those communities. And they had a policy in place and they had a policy in place for years where you had to have a certain amount of bid, which is with the court cost. They had to pay the court cost to buy these properties. Well, a lot of times in regular tax foreclosure, your court costs can be eleven hundred, thirteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollars. And a lot of these were vacant lots in a small community. There are a hundred, two hundred, four hundred, five hundred dollar lots. And so we met with all of the entities and discussed it and what are you doing with all of these properties not on your tax roll? And so we've probably sold upwards of three hundred and fifty properties in Jones County in doing that. So that, that is Stamford, Texas. They have a reclaimed Stamford.
And I would like to ask our city attorney, have you ever heard anything like this? And what can we do in this situation? Or you want some more time to do research on this one? Do I put you in bad position?
You're not putting me in a bad position. No, I've, I've not worked with a contract like this, but I understand what, what he's proposing to the city. And, and, you know, I'll be glad to talk with Rex about this and, you know, whether it works well for Halton City. It, it sounds like it's an opportunity to, to explore, for sure.
Okay. Any more question from council? Thank you so much, sir.
You bet. Thank you, we appreciate it. Look forward to it.
I appreciate your presentation and it's good learning, you know, session for us.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Rex, thank you.
Okay. At this time, at six thirty, I would like to open the citizen and visitor forum. Anyone in audience would like to speak? Please take your name, sir.
Bob Boykins, Halton City. One time in a row, you moved the visitors and citizens to the seven o'clock hour. And I decided I'd leave you alone if you still left at seven. I'd prefer it to be at the end of the meeting. But still, at this time, people, there's people have to take off work or, you know, if they've got something to say. And I think that, I think having it at seven o'clock instead of at the beginning of this meeting, it would, it would work better for the citizens. Thank you.
Wait. I tell you one thing, I have learned in America, we have three sheep, right? We are not here to serve for just one sheep. Of the people like work second sheep and come here on seven. We have first sheep, second sheep, third sheep. So so far, we moved to seven. The number of people show up, the same. We moved to six o'clock, the same. Now, I try six thirty to see what happened. They are the same. And you are the only one speaking for them. Thank you, Bob. I think, bye-bye.
Thank you, son.
Yes, sir, Daddy. By the way, at this time, any more person?
Go ahead, ma'am, please. Please take your name and welcome here in the meeting.
Hello, thank you. My name's Catherine Gunter. Coincidentally, what I wanted to talk about goes along with what Mr. Barrett just spoke on. With the closing of Kroger, there's been a ton of conversation with the citizens of what people can do to get involved and help with all of the vacant buildings that we have in the city. And one thing I would like the council to look at is vacant building ordinances. This is something that's being done all across the country. Our neighbors in Watauga have vacant building ordinances. Our neighbors in Richland Hills have vacant building ordinances. And it's basically a three-prong approach to vacant buildings. They have to register. The registration fees range from anywhere from seventy-five dollars in Lewisville, Texas, to three to six hundred dollars in Chicago, Illinois. And the fees for registration are to help cover the cost of the program so that it doesn't cost the city money to keeping up with registering these buildings. It also requires building owners or property owners to insure the building. Most ordinances I've looked at, it requires a one-million-dollar liability policy. And then the third prong of it, sorry, I hate speaking in public, is to maintain the building. Thing like the foundation has to be in order. The plumbing has to be in order. Exterior walls must be maintained. There can be no debris on the interior or the exterior of the property. And I think if the city had ordinances like this that have been very successful in other places, then it would help attract businesses, if they didn't have to first fix up the property, to lease and grow business on the property. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. Anyone else? Ms. Benzen? State, are you?
No, I just like...
Okay, you make a moment, so... By the way, at this time, there is none of the citizen to speak after this. And I will call the citizen and visitor forum. And at six thirty-five, at this time, our city staff and council will move into executive session based on chapter five fifty-one of Texas Government Code on section five fifty-one point oh-seven-one and five fifty-one point oh-seven-two at six thirty-five. Thank you. We'll see you at seven. Appreciate you coming here in raining, you know, outside cold.
Seven o'clock.
Today, February the tenth, two thousand twenty, and at seven P. M., this will be a regular session. Before that, I would like to call this meeting in order. At first, I would like to invite Pastor Steve Van Zen for invocation, and after that, Mr. Wal Gunther will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Father, we just thank you for today. For your goodness, and I just pray that for this council and the city business and all that kind of stuff that happens here, and I just pray that your wisdom will outshine opinion and that your humility will conquer arrogance and that you will continue to bless this city, Lord. I just pray for all the firefighters and police and first responders and just all the citizens here, Lord. I just pray that somehow you'll help us to love them like you love us, and we thank you for that. Amen.
Go ahead, Mr. Gunther.
Please join me in the, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much, young man. Okay, at first, I would like to say thanks to all of you, even the weather outside getting cold and wet, but you still come in here to join our meeting. That really, I really enjoy to see that, because like I said, this meeting is not just for council and the mayor, for everyone in the city and the people coming here to do business. Thank you, council. And we, Council Marian Hillier is not here today. She will be maybe next meeting. By the way, before we conduct the business... By the way, before we conduct the business, I would like to introduce you, our new city manager, Mr. Regphell. This is the man sitting next to me and for I don't know how many more years, but you have something to say?
I guess I just want to say that it's an honor and a privilege to serve as the city manager, and it was an honor and a privilege to be the deputy city manager over the last four years. I've created a lot of great and developed a lot of great relationships in this community. It's a great community, and I'm just honored, and I realize this is really not my position. It's the community's position. I'm just the one that gets to try to do great work, so thank you.
I tell you, we, all of us miss the old city manager, I mean former city manager, Keyland, but he younger than me. By the way, congratulations, Mr. Fell, and our next promotion is Mrs. Sedona Fowles. She, I see the city manager. Would you stand up, let people recognize you? Thank you. And the next guy, I don't want to pronounce his name, he's just like Greg. And would you stand up, tell the people your name, and this is a new IT director.
My name is Claude and Sam.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that, and I hope Greg will work hard just like Keyland, right? But he will, by the way. The next item will be announcement and events, Mr. Secretary Archamacho. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Announcements for February 10th, 2020. In the public library, they have Storytime, Sticker Tuesdays, Imagination Station, teen programs, and other library activities are all listed for the dates and times, so please check the library website. Additional activities include the GED study classes, which will be held Tuesday and Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. AARP tax preparation assistance is on Thursdays from 12:00 to 3:00, and registration is required. Computer classes in both English and Spanish, and you have to call for the schedule and the registration. The Halton City Library has been notified that it is a recipient of the 2019 Achievement of Excellence Award, and a presentation for this will be forthcoming. The Tarrant County Fire Chiefs Association, along with several other partners, including the Guns and Hoses Foundation of North Texas, is organizing a fundraiser for disaster relief for the citizens of Puerto Rico, and will have a collection site at Central Fire Station Number One. Early voting will begin for the federal, this is federal, primary election on February 18th through the 28th. Now, in the past, we've used the Northeast Center, which is the old library building, for early voting for both the Republican and Democratic parties, but because of the renovations that will be happening soon, this facility was not available. We posted a list of the available Tarrant County locations for the primary election at City Hall, and there's a link on the website. The federal primary election day will be held on Tuesday, March 3rd, and we will post the available voting locations on the websites on election day. Currently, the two closest facilities available for Halton City citizens is the Tarrant County Election Center, which is located at 2700 Premier Street in Fort Worth, and the Dan Echols Center, which is at 6801 Glenview Drive in North Richmond Hills. And again, the primary election day will be held on Tuesday, March 3rd. In Parks and Rec Spring Break Camp, registration is now open. It's only $75 a week until March 2nd, and then the price will increase to $100. They're accepting ages 6 through 13, and if you need more information, please contact the Rec Center. Soccer registration is now open for boys and girls, girls ages 4 to 6, and it's $50. Seven years up and older is $80. Registration ends Saturday, February 29th, so for more information, again, contact the Rec Center. City Hall and other facilities will be closed next Monday, February 17th for Presidents' Day, and will reopen Tuesday, February 18th. Friends Helping Friends will host a Burger and Bingo on Saturday, March 21st, at the Senior Center, starting at 6:00 PM. Bingo prizes will be at least $100 per game, and it will also include a bake sale, door prize, and an asylum auction. The proceeds will help benefit Friends Helping Friends Senior Transportation Services. And Mayor Pro Timlin Thompson, is there other people beside yourself that are here that have that for sale? Okay, well, anyway, be sure to go, you can also go, would you mind announcing those places they have the tickets?
You can purchase tickets at the library, I'm sorry. You may purchase tickets at the library or at the senior center. Any of the directors, myself, Bill Hooks, Darlene Hooks, Allison Roach, Cindy Reynolds, Brian Ayers, and Beverly Henson, and Suzette Teague, any of these people have tickets. So, we take check, cash, or credit card. So, thank you for your support in advance.
And those are $25 a ticket.
And I need discount if you buy early, let me.
$25 each, or two for 50, isn't that right? All right. Please be also advised that Hadley Street, which is from Fenchur East to the Med Block, will be closed beginning next Wednesday for storm, or actually, yeah, for Storm Drainage Week, work rather. The work is related to the construction of the new BISD Middle Schools, and that's the end of our announcements.
Thank you, sir. And at this time, we move to consent agenda. I would like council looking at item number one, minutes, and number two, three, four, and five. And if you have any question or comment, please do so. If not, this five item ready for a motion, Mr. Council, water roll.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, item number five is the only one, and that's the Tarrant County Multi-Jurisdictional Migration Plan. Chief can just let us know what's up about that.
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just wanted an overview of it?
Yes, sir, so that way the citizens can, you know, not everybody reads the packet and find it as entertaining as I do.
Okay, the 2020 Tarrant County Hazard Mitigation Plan, it's something we do every five years, so Tarrant County every five years has to update their plan, and that's what this is. This is essentially identical to the 2015 resolution that was adopted five years ago for the city. Through this plan, it kind of encompasses everything from pre-planning to recovery to incident action plans to recommendations and things like that if the city were to have some kind of disaster. It's a best practices model, if you will, for Tarrant County, and when we update our emergency management plan, that will go in with the annex to Tarrant County. But they're required every five years, and for them to adopt it, all the Tarrant County cities have to agree to a resolution.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sure.
Council, you have any more question or comment? If not, item number one to five, ready for motion. Councilman Crowe.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as is, and also I'd like to thank the fire department for fighting the fire over on my street last night, and so I'm glad nobody was hurt, and thanks a lot.
Thank you, Councilman Crowe, and Councilman Brandwees.
Thank you, that's for a second.
Okay, well, this five consent item, ready for vote. Okay, this five item unanimous approve, and I will move to regularize agenda. Item number six, ordinance number O dot 200, sorry, 2020, dot 001, dot 03, May election, special election. I see the city manager files. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a second reading to call the election for the special taxing on the street maintenance tax. Once again, just to refresh your memory, our two-cent tax is broken down by 1.375 for the general fund, .375 for streets, and .25 for CCPD. This is required by tax code for the voters to adopt this, and when the motion is made, please make sure it includes your tax expiration date and terms.
Council, you have any question for her? Councilor Crowe.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve ordinance Oscar dash 2020 dash 001 dash 03, calling for a special election for street maintenance tax for a period of 10 years to the next election on that.
Second reading?
Yes, sir, that would be for a second reading.
Okay. And thank you, and Councilor Saul.
Thank you, Mayor, that would be for a second.
Okay, if you don't have any more question or comment, go ahead, Rashia, you vote, please. For item number six. Okay, item number six unanimous approve, thank you, Ms. Fowles, and we move to item number seven, resolution number R dot 2020 dot 004 dot 01. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is for a reimbursement resolution for the $6 million debt portion for our streets and parks project. After much discussion of capital project needs, this is one of the items that was discussed to issue the $6 million debt, and so this is just for a reimbursement resolution if any expenses were to occur prior to that debt being issued.
Okay, Council, you have any question for her? Okay, I see none. By the way, I just remind you, based on the law passed last year, each item in this agenda, you're allowed to make a comment or, you know, anything we can, she can answer you. And this time, I see none, so I had to close this and this. Okay, go ahead. Sorry, I didn't see you.
I didn't let you open it up yet, you were just discussing it.
This is a new law, I just, once a while, remind, let the city, go ahead, sir.
Okay, Charlie Roberts, Halton City. Are there any unexpected expenses?
Would you state your name, please?
Charlie Roberts, Halton City. Are there any unexpected expenses expected? Why do we need a $6 million reimbursement? And we'll get to the $20 million also. I'd just like to cover unexpected upcoming expenses. For what purpose?
A reimbursement resolution.
Go ahead, state your name.
Andrew Friedman, SAMCO Capital Markets Financial Advisor to the city. Reimbursement resolution is not obligating the city to spend any money. It is a legal piece of paper, should the IRS come and audit the city and its debt issuances in the years to come, that allows the city to expend funds on either soft or hard costs, meaning design or other fees and expenses that may come up before the certificates of obligation are issued later this summer, but it doesn't obligate the city to spending any money prior to the project or into issuing that, those certificates of obligation into the future. It's really there as protection in the event that audited by the IRS down the line.
So, in the event that the city is planning on some sort of improvements or something and the bond is going to go to the voters, this would allow them to have the money to get designs and things implemented? Should the bond pass, it could be reimbursed, but should the bond fail, would that money be wasted?
That money would have been spent on. City staff may jump in here and correct me where I'm wrong, because this is getting a little bit outside of my bailiwick, but money spent on soft costs for either design or other aspects of the project would have been spent towards those, towards those ends. If the debt's not issued, it was still money expended.
So, in the event what's coming up, I know that we've got a $20,000, $200,000, $20 million, same thing as the $6 million going on, and that just happens to be the same amount as the bond that you're going to put on with the election. It appears that this money here is to cover possibly the drawing, whatever, soft expenses you call it, but this is prior to the bond actually going to the voters. I would just encourage us, if that is the intention, not to do that until after the voters have had a chance to respond to the bond to begin with. And I know you got a $6 million, it was discussed before, it's supposed to be for Parks and Rec as well as streets. Is that over and above the almost $3 million already allocated in the budget this year for Parks and Rec?
Yes, so this would be capital projects for Park and, Parks and Rec. It is not the city's intention to spend money ahead of an election or ahead of bond issuance. However, if an expense occurs, there are certain expenses that are related or tied to this that the city can reimburse itself, just as Andrew said.
Can you give an example of what type of expense would occur?
I'd be glad to give an example. Okay, so if we, if we go out for a bond election, for example, and this, we're actually talking about COs, which is a little bit different than GOs, but if we go out for a bond election, we always have to have, you know, we do feasibility studies, which we've done before, or have rendering so that the voters know something about what they're voting for, and so there's a cost. Now, sometimes it's minimum compared to the larger scale project, but sometimes you have to spend a little bit of money in order to research, and it costs money, and have renderings and those kind of things, so that we can make a decision on whether, or the council can make a decision to put something for a bond proposal. Just, just sometimes a need study can cost money.
I understand the cost of money, but in the case that's going on here, this has already been before the voters have been rejected. I would just urge the council to use caution in approving either one of these two items. Now, try not to spend our money unnecessarily until the voters say, yes, we want these things.
Understand. The last time, though, was a different situation, a different location, a different package. This is, this is different, so we have to show that, number one, what we're trying to do will fit on a piece of property before we go put it out on a bond proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Phil.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? This item number seven, ready for a motion. Councilman Crowe.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve resolution Romeo dash 2020 dash 004 01 for the reimbursement.
Thank you, sir, and Councilor Saul.
Thank you, Mayor, that's for a second.
We got a second now, please Rashia, you vote. Item number seven unanimous approve, thank you, and number eight, resolution number R dot 2020 dot 005 dot 01. Ms. Fowles, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the reimbursement resolution for the tax obligation of a $20 million debt in order to construct, improve, or equip the law enforcement center.
Council, you have any question? Okay, none? Go ahead, sir. Welcome, and state your name, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Trey Fowler, Halton City, Texas. Quick question. Back to item six, I was asking, was that not a public hearing on second reading?
No, this is not a public hearing, but the new law allow you, if you would like to speak, make a comment or something.
Okay. Well, and I had a question on that, because the way it reads, and I wasn't able to be here at the last meeting that y'all discussed it, is that going to be for, the way I'm interpreting it from reading it on the agenda, is that it's only for the street portion, but is that for the entire two cents that goes, used to be the EDC funding, and then now it's?
Are you talking about item number eight?
I'm talking about number six.
Number six? Can we go back?
If you want to talk about it, you can go back.
I just had a question on it.
It's up to you, and maybe we can do this at the end of the agenda.
Next time, you need to pay attention, and if you have questions.
I did pay attention, I was raising my hand back there, but I guess you didn't see me, so, okay. I was, believe me, I was paying attention.
All they did was renew it for the three eights.
Okay, so just the street portion? Okay, okay, fair enough. On item number eight, so is this, Mr. Manager, you alluded to the fact that part of this, or not, number seven, is that going to be a certificate of obligation bond?
Number seven is.
Number seven is, correct. Number eight doesn't say one way or another, is it certificate of obligation, or is it a general?
General, just GOs want to.
So, that's what number nine would be for that item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, or, I know I was at the meeting about, what, a month ago when y'all had that, and y'all discussed having a bond committee, and did all that get?
We had discussed having a bond committee for the city hall needs in the future. We've done space study needs in the, in the past for law enforcement, and those needs haven't changed. The other thing is that the police department, because of state and federal regulations, I mean, there's a lot of, those are privacy issues unless you're getting escorted back, so the lobby and the community room is, is essentially as far as the design and that kind of thing. It's. is what the citizens would be having access to. So the council decided that they wanted to move forward with, moving forward with the police department only, and that we were going to put a bond committee together for the possibility of a city hall bond election in the future.
Okay, did y'all have an additional meeting besides the one at the library? Or when was that discussed about moving forward? Because I, I think y'all went around. Right, at the old library, the community center, whatever the name of it is. But y'all had talked about, I remember Councilmember Groh and Councilmember Brown had brought it up about it going for a bond committee and study and, you know, doing it and bringing it up in November to November election, but how did it get expedited to me?
Each speaker allowed just three minutes.
Okay.
And next time, I just remind you and audience, when you speak up here, you have to speak exactly what agenda we are talking about. You can't go back and forth, and item number nine, we're not coming there yet. Would you please, sir?
Okay.
Exactly.
Well, just tell.
Item number eight.
Okay, well, eight, nine are related, I think, so, okay. Whatever be your pleasure, Mr. Mayor, but i- is that not, I'm just asking, because that was, it was my assumption that at the end of that meeting, that y'all talked about doing it in November for the law enforcement, and then next May for the other facility for city hall. But did y'all have another meeting that I missed?
I think you might miss some meeting, but most of the meeting from the city is public. We post on, online, and we have agenda, at least 48 hour, you know that, right? And I may, you, you may be overlooked, but.
Okay, I was just curious.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Okay, item number eight, you already done, right? I see none, and this item number eight, ready for a motion? We already done? Council, Groh?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve resolution Romeo dash two zero two zero dash zero zero five dash zero one for reimbursement resolution for tax exempt obligations.
Thank you, and Councilman Wies?
For a second.
We got a second, go ahead, Rashia, you vote, please, Council. Okay, item number eight unanimous approve, and now we have new number nine, Honesty Number O dot two zero two zero dot zero zero six dot zero one, bond election. Go ahead, Ms. Fowles.
Thank you, Mayor. After recommendations from council and presentations from our financial advisors during some workshops and meetings, this item calls for a May bond election for a law enforcement center to be constructed near the current site without any disruption of service. And so Hewlett Zollers has put together some renderings that I'd like to go over with you, give you an idea of what we're looking at. So just to the east of the current facility, you see in yellow, and just keep in mind, that's the property that is owned currently by the city. And so the existing facility would remain in business. The new facility would be constructed next to that. Once the new facility was completed in construction, everyone could move into that building, and then the current building would be demolished and become secure parking. So you see the dark black line that divides public parking versus secure parking, and then the public would have access to the main lobby as well as any meeting facilities that were constructed within the, the building itself. This gives you another view of the access for both the private and public. So you'll see the, the blue lines indicates the private access in and out, and the red would be public access in and out of the parking lot. And these are just a couple of option and renderings of what facility might look like. Again, these are not final, these are just some renderings that they put together to give you an idea, so that would be facing due west. That would be an option A. And this is an option B from two different views.
Council, you have a minute.
That's it?
Council, you have any comment, question? Council, Thompson?
Ms. Fowles, would you explain the reason that this is so important that we consider doing this as far as tax implications to the citizens and what it would mean for them, please?
Absolutely, so when the decision was made to issue debt or call a bond election, we would be able to do this without any tax increase to our citizens. So whenever our representatives from Samco came to you last, they went over the financial plan and what those numbers look like, and expressed the importance of doing this now, where this can be spent without it being a financial impact to our citizens and having to raise the tax rate to do so.
So you are explaining the implications that if we do not consider doing this, then it would mean at another time that the tax rates would be increased to cover this? Am I hearing that correctly?
Correct, so if, if we decided not to do this spend now, then the tax rate would drop and have to be significantly raised in order to do this at a future date. Also, the longer you put this off, and the more years that go by, your construction costs continue to rise at a very rapid rate. So as we wait longer, then the cost of doing these increase along with time.
In 2017, do you recall what the estimate for the police department was in the first renderings that we had to be built on the 43 acres?
I do not have that information with me, Cody might remember the details of that.
Welcome, Chief.
I have it in my office back there, and it was 13 some million, if I was to remember off the top of my head.
I was thinking 12 to 13 million, somewhere in there.
And some of that included the, the addition of the municipal courts as well involved in that.
Okay. While you're here, give us a little insight on what is happening at the current building. I know that we have our vehicles that are parked out, just in the parking lot, the employees. And I know in the past, we've had issues with some of your equipment that was stored outside in trailers. Could you give us a little bit of information?
My primary concern is going to be, first, of course and foremost, officer safety. And I hate to utilize things that have happened recently with officers, and, but you just look at what happened in New York just a couple of days ago. Unsecured parking lot, unsecured lobby allowed this individual, two locations, to go into and attack officers. You know, when we got into law enforcement a long time ago, we expected to get hurt. We expected to get in fights, but we expected that with bad people. We're not only doing it with bad people, we're being hunted now in certain situations. And right now, our police facility is far under par for the safety of the, not only the officers, but anybody that works there. Which goes back to the separation of city hall and the police department. You know, you, you look at the, the attacks on city governments, and more of them are directed towards police departments. So the separation of these two prevent, you know, or help minimize, it won't prevent it, but help minimize civilians in the city hall world, who also deals with, you know, irate customers that are, they're a little bit different. It prevents them from, or minimizes the risk of them being injured from a, some kind of an assault. Does that answer your question? And then, I mean, there's more, I can go on. I mean, you look at, you know, our vehicles and unsecured parking lots, we've had police vehicles broken into. There's some security concerns in our current facility that I don't want to discuss openly, but if y'all want to discuss those in a private setting, I can discuss those, give you a tour. I can give anybody a tour that wants to come and tour the police department to see the, the state of this repair that it is in. And it has nothing to do with building maintenance or anything. They only have three individuals working on all these, these facilities, and it's hard for them to keep up with everything that is going on. Kind of a country guy, so I got like 10 pounds of stuff in a five pound bag is pretty much, it sums up what the police department is.
Am I correct in saying that building was originally built in the late 50s, early 60s?
Yeah, well before my time, but that's what I've been told.
So we, just to draw a conclusion here, we can say at least the cost of the new building has already gone up $6 million.
Yes, ma'am. And we, we also, y'all approved a, a decision package last year for improvements on the facility, and that was just basically to get it somewhat in compliance with safety concerns that we had. We've put those on hold, no money's been spent on any of that yet to ascertain what's going to happen with this bond proposal.
Okay, thank you, Chief Phillips.
Councilor Groh? Yeah, just my concern about the safety. I just recently saw a YouTube video of an individual that was walking around our parking lot that was videotaping the patrol cars and then the, I imagine, officer cars, because that's pretty much all that's parked in that front parking lot, because I used to work at that, that facility. And so, and then you see video of officers going into the squad area. So it's where the, on the west side entrance. And, you know, with the assassination attempt of the officers in New York. When you come into the station, that's your secure area. That's where you, you, you let your guard down a little, because you know you're back at, back at home. And so you're able to go do your reports. And the fact that people are now looking to snipe officers and hitting them at places where they, they're supposed to feel secure, for me, this is one of the key reasons why we need to have this bond and get it passed, because it's a different world out here. You know, over the years, people have made attacking the police a rallying cry, and so we need to protect our officers that protect us. Thank you.
Council, Vazan?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm all about safety. My daughter-in-law is also a police officer, and I know that she has concerns with someone recognizing her personal vehicle because of vendettas over tickets and things. But other than safety, are there other regulations that we are not in compliance with on that building?
There's a lot of IT infrastructure, not only within the police department, but citywide, that has left us vulnerable. And it's, makes it a, a lot bigger and harder task for IT department to overcome some of the challenges that they have. So consistently moving, abating our servers. You know, we have a lot more restrictions now and demands on us from the DA's office and from state laws about retention of digital media. So getting that from us to the DA's office in a timely manner is very difficult with our current infrastructure, so that, that's, that's a big concern. Our CID's, CID office, currently we have 10, 10 CID personnel in there, a captain, sergeant, and a corporal. We need to expand that, and there's no, no more desk space in there for those, those individuals. Our property room, there's new restrictions on that and retention, and how long we got to hold on to evidence. So now we're kind of coming into problems with how much property we can actually hold into our, our current property room. And the ventilation back there, she is consistently dealing with narcotics and all kinds of dangerous stuff, and it doesn't have adequate ventilation in there for, for them. So there's a lot of, I mean, the list can just go on. Like I said, anybody wants to come in, we can walk through it, and I can show anybody any of the issues that we're having. It's home, it's been home to me since I've been here. But, you know, sometimes you got to look at changing home to grow with the family, and our family's grown. You know, back when I started, we had 60, upper 60, low 70s amount of officers. We now have 78, we need to increase that continuously. Like last year, when I did the proposal, just to maintain our current standards at our current population, I need to have 82 officers. If we go up towards a 50,000 mark to meet the FBI and the IACP standard, which is International Association Chiefs of Police, I got to have 93 officers. So, you know, trying to continue to grow, and we're, we're at our limits.
Well, I want to thank you, I know we kind of put you on the spot tonight, but thank you.
I'm used to it by now.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, the people already know, I have 32 years law enforcement experience. I have seen a lot. I work in that building many times, you can smell the plumbing, the interview room, when you talk, this side, and other side, there is no privacy. Plus police car park everywhere. We don't have any officer get shot, just like New York. But don't even underestimate the criminal. We want to build this new police station for safety of officer, because officer is your friend, maybe some of your relative. The council and the mayor sitting here try to build new police station or city hall, not for ourselves. We come and go. I have good, good-looking living room. I don't need the city hall or my office. So you have to realize, North Eastern County, you look at the Houghton City, we locate over five and six highway, and we are look like this right now. Just last year until now, we are booming. Only one thing, everybody know in this room. You want to load a tax for the citizen in the future? You have to spend money now to invest it. And the city hall is the front face of the city. Would you like to deal, make a deal with somebody, bring you into a garage and make a deal? No, it's not impressed. Look at North Richland Hill, Richland Hill, or Targa, everybody around us, except Houghton City. In addition, none of our building right now comply with ADA code. And the federal can come down here, fire us for over $1 million, or they shut down our business. If 10 years ago, we build this city hall, cost just about half of the price right now. And then sometime when I say something like this, somebody shit chat, no, no. You try to say you did not have, some of you don't have the guts to spend $100 more for property tax or anything else per year, but you have the guts to pay over $100 for Wi-Fi and cable, looking at that. I come in here to run for mayor, not try to make money. I try to make the city look better, because this is my city. This is my homeland. And I wish everyone, just do not come in here. Even you run for a council, elect official, say, I will try to say some tax for all the citizen. We can depend on just 3, 400 citizen and suffer the whole city wipe. That's my message. I wish everybody wake up, everybody have a good cellphone. Cost at least, cheap best one, $100. But we just ask you if you can share $100 for city, make city look better. I bet you, with the investor come to town right now, about five more years, you will see the revenue bill up. At that time, we load the price, just like on item number six, whatever. One of the citizens say, okay, you spend money for this, that. Well, everything need cost. Even you build your house, you have to have engineer, you have to have surveyor, you have construction, you have carpet layer, everything. Nothing, you know, cheap at this time. But if you weigh another five years, the price tag will go up each year roughly about $2 million. Please, anyone at home, anyone here? We would like to support our Houghton City, don't look like this. Would you happy to walk in this city and drink the water right there? The governor, I underneath you over 50 years old, 60 years old, contaminated. Please think about that. And like I told the council, we don't need to throw the money to, you know, put remodeling, keep remodeling. You know up there, how many rats die up there? And the sewage smell bad. The plumbing, you can see water run all night, sometime I have to say stop, because everything is getting old. Even me, I'm getting old too. You know, nobody getting younger. But at least I try to fix up myself, I exercise, do something to make me look better. do something to make me look better in the public, just like our city hall right now, police station. Say your season, I hurt you. Please do not come in here, try to shoot it down. This is the time we make our city move. If not, we will stay back another generation behind North Richland Hill and Watauga. Thank you Chief, I appreciate that. Anyone in the chamber would like to say something about this? Go ahead.
Please take your name, ma'am.
Catherine Gunter, Haltam City. Um, I just looked it up on the TAD, it was built in nineteen fifty-nine, but that's not my question. My question is, um, I've been in the police station, I've gone with other citizens, with my children, uh, we delivered cards and donuts that different residents around the city had done. And just being in there with my children trying to deliver something to our police officers, it was cramped. And it wasn't even all the officers. Before the bond is released and we get to vote on it, will the citizens get to know how much square footage and how much of kind of the improvements are, this is my, we moved here during the last bond. So we'll get to get all of that information before we vote, correct? This is just to have the vote?
That is correct.
Okay.
Information you need to make a decision.
Thank you.
Okay, I, go ahead sir. Yeah, three minutes.
Run number nine, right?
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, I understand as the debt rolls off of, of what the city owes, that to borrow money later would cost money, but to keep the same tax right now is okay, but it doesn't mean that that tax that you keep has to be spent on any particular project, correct? Was that confusing? Okay, as a tax, as, as we lose debt, and, and what your advisor is saying right now is that as the debt rolls off, we can, we've got twenty million dollar surplus, if you want to say that, because we're not paying that debt anymore. Don't call it a surplus, call it what you want. But, but what you're saying is I got twenty million dollars that I can spend and not have to raise taxes, we keep everything the same, just to put it in a nutshell. But it doesn't mean that that money that you've got now has to be on any particular project. It could be on something that actually helps the economy grow. And Mr., uh, Ma- Mayor Trung, you brought it up about how, you know, new city hall and business people won't come into the city hall. Can you tell me which business, uh, uh, the home, the houses are being built, the apartments being built, which businesses that have come into city hall and not done business with the city because of the city hall?
I don't understand your question.
Which, which business came to city hall and did not do business because of the looks of the building?
Well, you know, I've been here seven years, eight years.
Okay, so, so, no, but I got three minutes, so let me not waste it.
Okay, go ahead, you speak up.
I think, I think that we should spend money, I'm not saying that we should not.
Yes, sir.
Spend money, I'm just saying that should we spend it on things that might actually help us generate revenue? Not, city hall will not generate us revenue. If you took the money you want for city hall and you applied it to something else, for example, North Richland Hills, if I understand this correctly, they own the Babes Restaurant that we all want. Because they invested in that property, invested in that restaurant, then they leased it to Babes. Is that pretty accurate? Those might be the kind of things that Haltam City needs to do if we want to grow the city and get some tax revenue here.
Okay, I, at this time, I did not, okay, the bond election did not mention about city hall. Generally, you might speak, if for the whole city facility. And this time, the bond election did not for city hall at all, sir.
I understand. You brought it up in your conversation when you got on, yes.
Yes, I do.
I was addressing your conversation.
Okay, sir. Go ahead, you have anything else?
No, I think that, but is, is that correct Sedona, we do not have to take that money and spend on any one thing? We just have the ability right now to have that money and not raise taxes?
It, it, they're not revenues that flow to the city, it's capacity, your tax levy creates capacity to support new debt service. It cannot be spent on whatever you want. You have to have a bond election where the citizens authorize a particular project.
Correct.
Supported by those taxes. So it's not just, uh, a surplus of revenues that could be spent on any project and certainly, uh, bringing businesses into town, uh, is more the, uh, product of the Economic Development Corporation and not the business of the city council, uh, and your ability to levy, uh, debt service for those purposes. Uh, but that gets into a lot of nuance.
So we could spend twenty million on the police station or we could spend twenty million on a Babes, correct?
On a, on a base?
Babes, to invest.
No, you could, you, by and large, probably could not.
We cannot have a bond election that says, hey, we, or, or the city council can't, uh, take that money and, and find a way to invest it in businesses so that they want to come here, incentives?
Are, where, the city's restricted on what it can invest in? Their, their regulations on what we can put our money in?
I got that.
Okay.
But you're not limited to one thing.
Okay, I think you're getting things confused. Okay, so as, as the debt rolls off, okay, either we issue new debt to keep this tax rate the same, or the tax rate has to go off.
Gotcha.
Because there are two sides to the tax rate.
Right.
You have a MNO and INS, interest and sinking. And we're talking about the interest in sinking.
I understand.
Okay, so as the interest in sinking goes, if we do not issue new debt, the interest in sinking goes down.
Correct.
So then people become, then the.
And that creates a tax drop to the homeowners, to the property.
Correct.
I got you.
And, but, you know, business goes, you know, and you have to replace facilities because times change and capabilities are needed to change. And so we have to keep up with it. So then this is the opportune time to issue debt because it's rolling off.
I, I, I do understand that, I really do, Mr. Gro. It's also an opportune time to invest in businesses to come here. We're losing businesses, we're losing the very businesses that are going to pay for these debts. And we need to try to reverse that if we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
The city doesn't really have a platform, or the city council doesn't have a platform to invest in outside businesses. That's.
They invested in the property.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Row.
Just to clarify for the audience, what we're talking about is the debt for capital improvement projects. Uh, business incentives, like three eighty agreements and that kind of thing, is, is not your capital improvement debt. You don't, you don't do debt for that. So, um, we do have that, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about capital improvement projects, like streets, facilities, parks, things of that nature.
Streets are good.
Oh. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, Trey Fowler, um, is part of this due to Senate Bill Two, is it the, or the, the new regulations on debt? Is that why we're talking about doing debt server, or, or instead of utilizing savings or utilizing debt rolling off and there's a cap? Is there not a cap? Is this not affected by it?
Uh, I'm gonna get Sedona to answer, but I, and the answer is no, but she'll, she'll explain that.
Okay.
But what we're talking about is just fund capacity for needed improvements for capital projects. As far as the, uh, Senate Bill Two, that doesn't affect the INS, she can explain that for you.
Let, uh, let me do this way correctly. Allow Ms. Fowler say for three minutes. And after that, our staff will answer that question. We cannot come in here and back and forth arguing, it's not arguing at all. Okay, I, I need to listen to your comments.
Now, that's, that may be a poor choice of words, Mayor, it's not arguing, I have questions. Um, there's been some comments thrown out there about the thirteen million it used to cost, did that, you know, one question was, did that include demolition of the building? Because that was, thirteen million was based on it being with one building north of the library, no demolition, no nothing. So, we, we need to be real honest here on a lot of this stuff. As far as, um, you hear a lot of things, and, you know, of course, and I'm gonna be accused of not being police and all that, but I think probably Chief Phillips and some of them may agree, I, I'm in full support of our police officers regardless of what's thrown out there and what's said. Um, now, do I believe that we build new buildings and all? No, I don't. I'm not in support of this. I'm in support of paying our police officers better and actually putting more police officers on the street. So if there's any question, that's what I'm in support of, so that there's no confusion. Uh, there was thirteen gunshots about two blocks south of me last week at one o'clock in the morning. So, um, it's a little concerning what's going on out there. So, yeah, I think money could be better spent, in my opinion. Um, I'll, I'll take the tour with Chief Phillips. I'll, I'll sure give him that, that, uh, opportunity to sell me on it. But, uh, you know, I'm thinking, or I'm, I'm asking the council to consider, if we've got debt service out there that's dropping, why wouldn't we spend twenty million dollars on streets instead of six million on streets and twenty million on a building and then talk about buying a new, buying a building? We're gonna say this building's rundown and worn out and all that, but we're looking at a Wisdom Center that was built the same time, that's just as old, or we're talking about building a new facility. Mayor, you prefaced your comments while ago with the city's booming. Well, if the city's booming, then this city hall hasn't affected one developer from coming in here. I develop, I build, I do all that. We don't look at city halls, we don't care about city hall. We care about what's in the community. We care about good roads, about policing, good water infrastructure, those are the things we're worried about as developers. So if that helps y'all out in making a decision.
Your time is over and I thank you, your personal opinion and comment. Appreciate that. Let the voter and the citizen decide that. Thank you, sir. Next. There's.
Sedona, go ahead and answer.
Just wanted to clarify that Senate Bill Two, uh, does not apply to the INS side of the debt. It only applies to the cap on the MNO side of the debt.
Thank you, Ms. Sedona. And, uh, at this time, item number nine, ready for a motion?
Uh, Council Wees.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the matter of, uh, this, I will, Brent Wees, move to adopt this ordinance, ordinance number O dash two zero two zero dash zero zero six dash zero one. Uh, the city, Haltam City, Texas, calling a bond election with proposition A and the amount of twenty million.
First and only reading.
First and only reading.
Thank you. Council Thompson.
That would be for a second, Mayor.
We got second, go ahead, pressure your vote, please, Council. Item number nine unanimous approve, and now we know number ten, resolution number R dot two zero two zero dot zero zero six, that's your one A. And I believe that's Purdue, Brent.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, thank you. My name is Elizabeth Calvo, I'm a, I'm a partner with the Law Firm of Purdue, Brandon, we are your delinquent tax attorneys. And as part of the service that we provide to you, we market any properties that have been struck off to you via tax foreclosure on our website. And tonight, we have a couple of bids for your consideration. So on item ten, we've got two competing bids for the property located at forty-three thirty-three Mona Street. That property was struck off to the city back in two thousand and five. Uh, that bid is submitted, the first bid is submitted by Maria and Noel Perez. The bid amount is for twelve thousand five hundred dollars plus the two thousand through the two thousand and five post judgment taxes. Their intended use of the property is to build a home. The current property value is twelve thousand dollars. And so the net amount that would go toward Haltam City is four thousand three hundred and nine dollars and eighteen cents. Um, the next bid is by Mr. Valdemar Ramirez and his bid amount is for six thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars plus the two thousand through the two thousand and five taxes. His intended use of the property is to also build a home. The current property value of the property is twelve thousand dollars and the net amount that would go toward Haltam City is two thousand seven hundred and nine dollars and five cents. Now, both of these bids are sufficient to not require the city to go to the other units for authority to approve this sale. Um, and also, you need to be aware that both bids, since they are for the same intended use, the city will need to accept the highest and best offer here. So we've submitted resolutions and resale deeds for your consideration.
Council, you have a question or comment from Miss Purdue? Brandon? Council Vanzan?
Thank you, Mayor.
Not yet. Is anyone want to say something? No, go ahead, ma'am. Motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number R dash two zero two zero dash zero zero six dash O one A.
Thank you, ma'am, and, uh, Council Thompson?
That would be for a second.
We got a second, go ahead, pressure your vote if you have no comment or question. Item number ten unanimous approve, and now we move to number eleven, resolution number R dot two zero two zero dot O O seven, that's your one, Ms. Purdue, Brandon.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, again, we've got a bid that was submitted for the twenty-one oh-six North Beach Street property. That bid was submitted by Mr. Valdemar Ramirez. The bid amount is for seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars plus the two thousand and seven taxes. The intended use of the property is to build a home. The current value is thirty-five thousand dollars and the net amount to Haltam City would be two thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Again, the bid amount is sufficient to not require approval from the other taxing units.
Council, you have any question? No. Go ahead, uh, this item, number eleven, ready for motion? Council Row?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution, uh, Romeo dash two zero two zero dash zero zero seven dash zero one.
Thank you, sir, and, uh, Council Sol.
Thank you, Mayor, that's for a second.
We got a second, and now please pressure your vote. Item number eleven unanimous approve by all the council present. Thank you, and number, I appreciate that, ma'am.
Thank you, sir, thank you so much.
Number twelve, uh, Greg, would you please?
Greg.
Rex, Rex Smith?
Oh, no. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we've talked about bonds, talked about taking properties off the tax rolls. I say, let's complete this trifecta and let's talk about drainage. All right, and item number twelve, I'm gonna ask you to approve an engineering agreement with half associates for some Carson Bridge work and the study of Little Fossil Creek drainage improvements. So first of all, the smaller part of the agreement is to remove, uh, some utilities, some steel piping that we came across when we redid the Carson Bridge project. Prior to redoing the Carson Bridge project, all known utilities were relocated, hired the contractor. While the contractor started working, he came across a steel pipe that no one would identify what this is. This is a cross section. Carson's up here, so your concrete line channels like this. The reason why this side goes like this, this is where the sidewalk is. So if you look down there, you'll see a bit of a steel pipe that's exposed coming out of the wall and into the ground. Through quite a bit of research, we found out that a company called Fiberlight owned the steel casing and inside it, I believe there were nine fiber lines that they had leased out to various entities. With these various entities, some could relocate their facilities immediately. Other entities, I think Comcast was one of them, they required a forty-five day notice so that they could notify their customers. Long story short, by the time that Fiberlight could notify all the companies, relocate their facilities, and then relocate all the fiber into their new facilities, the construction was gonna be either done or pretty close to being done, which would require the contractor at the time to come back. The contractor has a local office in Decatur, but their home office is in Michigan. The estimates that we were getting in our weekly meetings were, we're probably looking at somewhere in excess of fifty thousand, just to cut the pipe here and here and then replace the concrete. It's way too much for that. So what we decided was we'd wait till after the project has been complete and then we'll look at, you know, doing a little bit of engineering design and removing the pipe that's in the channel. This contract over here covers that portion. I do have a bigger view so that you can see exactly where it is. And the thought is that half could design the plans far enough along where our own public works crews could actually do the work. So that would obviously save us some more money. All right, the other part of this agreement is gonna get a little bit more in depth, so bear with me. So presently, this is the floodplain map of Little Fossil Creek. What this is, if you rec, this is one twenty-one, midway's up here, Little Fossil Creek goes through like this. So what you're seeing is during the one hundred year rain event, a big gully washer, the water comes out of its banks and spreads. This is how far it spreads. I, so that's looking at it from the top. So from the side, when you're looking at the channel, so here's a channel during a hundred year rain event, again, it goes out of its banks way out to here. That's what we saw in the previous picture. To get it back in its banks, what we did on this project was we put a concrete liner and enlarged the creek. So all this water that was up here did now pretty much fit inside the creek. So all this water that was up here could now pretty much fit inside the creek. The idea was, we'd look at doing that as appropriate for the creek between our city limits with Fort Worth down here, all the way up to Belknap Street. That was the original project. We went ahead, I want to say probably around two thousand and five, this was before I was here, and we started buying property. And then shortly after that, we looked at what our remaining funds were, what we could afford, and all we could afford in terms of construction was to do this portion of the project. So this portion of the project has been completed such that it'll contain the one-hundred-year rain event. I say problem, it's probably the wrong word to use. The situation, though, is with only doing this much construction, if we rerun the model, we're pretty confident we're not going to get the results we want. So again, the floodplain's way out till here, but because we only did this amount, we'd like to reduce this, this again is Thomas Road right through here, which is where we stopped, we'd like to reduce this as much as we can. So what that may mean is that when Half reruns the model, they go and they look a little bit further upstream. Maybe there's some dirt work that we could do with our own crews, and we can transition enough that we get, we get a bigger bang for the buck, if you will. And then upon looking at that, rerunning the model, then maybe we go back to FEMA and we get as much of a reduction as we can. So what this agreement in front of you covers, it covers Half to do the plans for removing of the steel casement right at Carson Street, then it covers running the model and coming up with the best plan of action on what we should do upstream of Thomas Road. Then upon us doing that construction work, they would take the next step, which is the bulk of the contract, deal with FEMA to actually get the map changed. So I would be coming back at you once we do learn just what we need to do upstream. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them. Mr. Dennis Hare with Half Associates is also here. He's been the project manager probably for at least the last ten years on this project.
Council Van Zandt, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. So does Fiberlight not have any financial responsibility for holding up this project?
Well, they had the right to be there. They were in Techstat to right away. None of us, even Techstat wasn't aware that they were there. So in fact, they wanted to come to us to help fund their relocation, and we said, we can't do that. So they were out hundreds of thousands of dollars to relocate their facilities. I wish we could have done that, but the reality is, we could not.
Okay. So, but that was the reason that construction was held up?
No, because we came across that, construction was allowed to go on.
Okay. All right. So is that above the already five hundred thousand dollars that we're over budget on that project?
So when you say, we have spent probably around fifteen million on this project, we're expecting, because we entered into a contract with Techstat, we're expecting somewhere around a two-point-two million dollar bill for the balance that we're going to owe them. They haven't done their final accounting. I've tried to, I've talked to Techstat, two million dollars is awful lot for us to spend in one fiscal year. So I've got Techstat convinced that once we get the final accounting, that we'll spread that payment out over two years.
Okay. But that is above what was budgeted, is that correct?
Correct. That two million now has been in our capital improvement plan for at least the last year. So initially, yes, but once we were aware that this project was going to be much more expensive than what Techstat originally anticipated, we went ahead and programmed that into our capital improvements plan.
Last question. So this, if we approve this, this will help get the FEMA maps changed?
So if we approve this, and the limited amount of work that's done here, we either do in-house or we find a way to hire a contractor to do this. Once that's done, then this, then we go back to this contract, and yes, then it would include the work to get the maps changed.
Thank you for all the hard work, appreciate it.
Thank you, Council Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Greg, thank you, as always. Help me up, Greg, before, did I see somewhere one time, before I even moved back to the city, that actually this whole fossil creek, Little Fossil Creek was a three-part deal, one twenty-one, Belknap, and then Walthall Bridge to completely remove that land from the flood? Am I dreaming that, or?
No, but that's my dream. My dream is that after we get this phase done, that we do the next phase, which might even be beyond Walthall, maybe all the way up to Haltem Road, and then the last phase from Haltem Road to Beach Street. However, these projects are exceptionally expensive. So the next, as we did, we funded part of these channel improvements with the bond program, I want to say the bond from a two thousand and nine bond program. We'd be looking at something very similar due to the expense for future phases. But yes, ideally, I would like to take out as many properties as we can from the floodplain.
Would Belknap and Walthall completely remove that land from the floodplain?
Well, we have to go upstream of Thomas first, and right now, the Belknap, that bridge acts as a dam, so that bridge is going to have to be replaced, which once again means we're going to have to enter into an agreement with Techstat. Fortunately, we own quite a bit of land along the creek in the Walthall area, so you might have spent a little bit less on property acquisition, but I'm going to imagine construction, that continually goes up.
Okay. And you've answered everything, so my final question was going to be, does this hold up anything in the second, third, fourth, but we're not there?
No, we haven't even applied for funds. That's something that we'll probably have to talk about in the future, but I think the idea is, let's get this phase done, let's get the maps reduced, the floodplain reduced, and then let's start thinking about the next phase and the best way to fund it.
You know, because the way I look at all, any land that we can take out of the floodplain, that ups the ad valorem tax.
Exactly. And it's, it's rather difficult to develop in the floodplain. It's extra hoops that a developer has to go through. So while the property's not worth as much, it costs that developer more to construct, so it's the opposite of a win-win.
Exactly. Thank you, Greg, as always.
Thank you, Council Grow. I'm sorry, grow and proud, you know. Should like somebody call me arc and end, you know, and I mess up all the time, sorry about that. By the way, go ahead, Ms. Donley Master.
Donley Master. I'm like Mr. Ricky Brown there, and maybe somebody can, I'm asking the questions out of ignorance, but I thought at one time that we had passed a bond in two thousand and ten to excavate, or however you want to use the terminology, from Belknap down. And so what we got now, from, what is it, Belknap, shall we say, north, we got a wide canyon to handle the floodplain. And then we got from Thomas Road out, we got a wide canyon, so we got a river dumping into a creek into a river. Does anybody know why that wasn't followed up on?
Why don't let he finish first?
No, I'm asking him, I'm sorry. I'm asking Mr. Van Nuys.
Go ahead, you go ahead, address the problem and let him finish, because I would like not try to, you know, answer back and forth.
Yes, sir, okay. Well, I'm through then.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Go ahead, sir.
So Mr. Lemaster's right. Originally, when this project was conceived, and it was probably, there is documentation as back as nineteen eighty-seven, where the Corps of Engineers did cost over benefit studies to see if this was even eligible for federal funds. So this project's been on the books, so to speak, forever. The two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten bond program that passed, the idea was at the time, we would be able to, just as Mr. Lemaster indicated, do all of this. However, the cost of property acquisition greatly exceeded what the preliminary estimates were. So when it came time to construction back in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, all we could afford in terms of construction is this right through here. So on the good side, once we get the work that I'm recommending that we do tonight, we've already owned the property through here. So property acquisition, we don't have to worry about, it's just a matter of trying to fund the dollars for construction. So does that make sense? Kind of tell you how we got where we are, it's just a matter of funding. As you know, as we heard earlier tonight, when we've got construction dollars programmed for twenty twenty, but we don't actually spend those in twenty twenty-five, you can't use twenty twenty prices in twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Thank you. Council Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Getting back to what I had stated earlier, I would like to see if it didn't, did not cost a lot of money to how much we could spend and how much we would see an increase in the value of the land, all that land that's going to be taken out of the floodplain and put at normal land prices of, where's the balancing point? You know, maybe, I mean, I could see where it all maybe paid for itself.
And that's something we might have to take a closer look at, once Half comes back and tells us, you know, just how far, this clouded distance, I've just, is an imaginary cloud. You know, it, maybe we have to go all the way up through here to get a significant reduction. But that's exactly where we're going to look at. What's our biggest bang for the buck? How many properties do we get off, out of the floodplain and now at full value onto the tax rolls? But that's probably going to be better addressed by an economist than, rather than an engineer.
Thank you very much, Greg, as always.
Any more question? I see none, go ahead. This item number twelve, ready for motion? Council Grow? I want to make sure your name correct, Ms. Brown. I do.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve an award, award of the engineering agreement for Carson Street Bridge and Little Fossil Creek Channel Improvements Mapping Study and Utility Casing Removal.
Thank you. Council Thompson?
Mayor, that would be for a second.
Thank you. We have a second, go ahead, pressure your vote. Okay, unanimous approval, item number twelve. Now we move them, thank you, sir, and I believe thirteen, you also, development agreement.
All right, and item number thirteen, this is a, hopefully a relatively simple item, with the final plat that you all approved a few months ago of the area around Loop Eight Twenty and Anderson. I have North Arrow going this way just because of the odd shape of the plat. This is the Loop Eight Twenty access road, this is Anderson, and then this is Northern Cross. The Northern Cross apartments are down here, Beach is even further down, it kind of gets your bearings. So these lots were developed into fi, this property was developed into five lots with two lots being here, two lots being over here, and one lot over here. The developers, LGE, their, this project is presently under construction. Large projects, we like to get into a development agreement with the developer. In Haltem City, we call those facilities agreements. Those pretty much iron out what the developer's responsibilities are through the development process and what the cities are. Sometimes, I think you've seen in the past, when a road's being reconstructed and it's not fair to make the developer put in the whole road, we might do some participation. If there's some upsizing of sanitary sewers, you know, we might do some participation. None of that exists here. There are no costs, this is just strictly outlining pretty much the developer's responsibilities. And what he's doing for these lots in terms of public infrastructure is he is putting in water, public water around the buildings that will support fire hydrants so that in the event, heaven forbid, that a building catches on fire, our fire department can be rest assured that the fire hydrants will work properly. So having said that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Clay Christie is here, he is the engineer of record for LGE, so if you want to stump someone else besides me, have at them.
Council Grow?
Are we having any issues with water with the sprinkler systems, like we have with the apartment complex?
No, because the height of these buildings, the apartment complex was going to the third floor, that is something, LGE was soon as-
How tall are these buildings going to be?
Right. That might be better addressed by Clay.
Welcome, and thank you, please.
Good evening, Clay Christie, Claymore Engineering, nineteen oh-three Central Drive. To our knowledge, there's not anything that we have right now that's an issue with water pressure services. We have worked with our MEP, and that's more of the internal side, I'm the site civil. The buildings, off the top of my head, they're between thirty-five, forty feet tall. I know they have done their pressure tests, then there may be some pumps that are going to be required, you know, I mean, inside if there is needing, but they're designing all that, they're running it. So that shouldn't be an issue based on that, on what they're designing, what they're needs.
Okay, I just don't want to have any surprises down in the future when you actually have the structure up and say, hey.
Yeah. So typically what happens, I mean, we've got, we've got twelve-inch water mains that are looping the perimeter of the site where the fire services are going to be tapped in, and we have, I believe, a ten-inch fire line going into the building, which is pretty substantial size of water service for a fire line going into the building for volumes. I do know that, but I don't know the pressure ratings and everything else.
You're well aware. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Council Salt?
What's the timeline for this? I realize it's a, it's a huge project, but I was just wondering if, what the timeline for completion?
I encourage you to drive by, it's under construction right now. So they're, they're moving dirt, it is going to be a longer process, probably next some, spring, summer?
It'll be done around January.
There you go.
January, so year.
For a year.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more question? I see none. Item number thirteen, ready for motion? Council Grow?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the facilities agreement for the Colonial Park Edition Phase Two, Blocks One, Lots One, Two, Block Two, Lots One, Two, and Block Five, Lot One.
Thank you, sir, and Council Thompson?
That would be for a second.
Okay, please pressure your vote. Item number thirteen. Unanimous approval, item number thirteen, now we move number fourteen, Ms. Basula, on P dot zero zero four dot twenty, final plat.
Evening, Mayor and Council. So this is a public hearing and consider action on the application of John Pitstick for the final plat of Phase One, containing approximately eleven acres of the forty-two acres, being a portion of the Heritage Village preliminary plat of four hundred and twelve lots. The applicant proposes to create one hundred and eleven residential lots and fourteen open spaces in Phase One of this project. The largest open space for the project is included in Phase One, which will be a park for residents and open to the general public, and this is the first of five phases for overall residential subdivision. There is a mix of attached and detached single-family residential homes. This is not a multifamily development. Even though some of the homes are attached, the subdivision plat will designate individual property lines for each residence. The preliminary plat for this project was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on October twenty-second, twenty nineteen, and City Council on November eleventh, twenty nineteen. On January twenty-eighth, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the plat. There was one in favor on the mailouts, none opposed, and one returned to sender. And if we look up here, this is a property for development, and this first phase is basically going to be the Haltem Road frontage with bordering Spring Lake and Glenview across from the library. This is the layout with this being that green space park that I mentioned. Here's the whole subdivision project, which is the preliminary plat that we've already approved. And this is the layout of the different product models that'll be in the development. Here's the street layouts for the access plan as far as thoroughfare plans, these are alleyways, and these are, I believe, minor streets. This is the landscape plan. This is the landscape plan. Uh, these are some elevation details of the different products that they'll have available. Facing north from Glenview, northeast from Glenview and Halton, east from Halton, southeast from Halton and Spring Lake, south from Spring Lake, and southwest from Denton Highway and Spring Lake. If you have any questions, I'm available. Uh, Mr. Lee and, uh, Austin are here also with the company.
Thank you, Ms. Basula. I'm so excited to see this one bill, but by the way, Castle, you have any comment, question? You done a good job, and this item ready for public hearing. I will pu, uh, open public hearing at eight twenty-four. Go ahead.
Bob Watkins, Halton City, Texas. Excuse me. Uh, at the end of the public hear, or during the public hearing, your planning zoning, I made a recommendation at which nobody shot it down, they just didn't go for it, that it seems it would be good for there to be some kind of restroom on that, on that park for two or three reasons. Number one is, people going to want to go to the restroom. Number two is where they're going to go is across the street to the library, which is just, causes a little problem, and, and they also may get run over between the park and the library. So at the end of the meeting, two of the members came up to me and said, are you going to bring this up at the council? Because it needs bringing up. But it just seemed like to me that there be, should be some sort of facility. They, they say that when there's, uh, special events, that they're going to, uh, bring porta potties. But if that, if that park is successful at all, particularly, they're nice enough to let the city use it, the residents can go to their own houses to go to the restroom, but the people that just come in will need someplace, and I think that it would be good for them to build some sort of restroom on that facility, on that park.
Thank you, sir, and, uh, what do you think? Because, uh, okay, here, Ms. Basula, is this, uh, do they have a park in there, right? Their own park? Built by the, uh, the people, yeah? And, uh-
It will not be a city-maintained park, no, sir.
Okay, private, right?
Yes.
And, uh, just for the tenant, right?
No, it's open to the public also.
Public also?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that not bad idea because, you know, when you build a park, I would looking for the restroom.
Developers here, we might want one.
Yeah, go ahead, sir. Because, uh, you know, kid, you know them. Sometime they need so bad, and what can you do? This America, not lie in my country, you know?
Mr. Mayor, Dustin Austin, uh, with our country home, seven hundred West Harwood in Hurst, Texas.
Yes.
Appreciate you guys, uh, entertaining this tonight, uh, for final plat, for final approval. To, to answer the question, uh, we're still in the design concept of, of that park, and there potentially, there's a tremendous amount of open space. If you look throughout this entire project, that could potentially have a clubhouse and restrooms and additional amenities. So at, at this current stage, we don't have a restroom program for this.
Yeah.
Particular open area. Um, so that, that's just really where we're at. Uh, you know, I'd been, ma, ma, maybe, um, wrong, but I think there's probably several parks throughout the town and throughout the cities that we, uh, build in that, that don't typically have public, um, uh, restroom facilities. And, uh, you know, a, as discussed, when we do have these events, when we bring out food trucks or what, whatever the community event may be, we do plan on bringing in portable toilet units for those events. So it's still in design concept right now. I don't think we've submitted anything to city staff on that final park or any layout, so, um-
Well, I'll tell you one thing. We have that problem in Halton City. We have so many park. And mo, not, all of them have restroom, but to me, uh, not only for a kid, for people by my age.
Sure.
Restroom important.
Yes, sir.
Thinking about that, sir, would you please?
Yes, will.
I think Mr. Bob Watkins have a good idea.
Will do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Castle, you have any, uh, Castle Wees, go ahead, sir.
I had a comment on the restroom, because I think they are a great idea, but the problem we're dealing with here, that we have a private park with an HLA that we're going to be asking to pay for a public use, because what's going to happen is they're going to have to find a way to clean those restrooms. And since that's a private park, now you're going to have them using their HLA to clean a public use area that we're going to be using.
Any more question or comment? Oh, if you stand up. Okay, this I, you, okay. Go ahead, thank you. Okay. I'm Chloe, uh, public hearing at, uh, eight twenty-seven, and now this item number fourteen, ready for motion. Councilman Bra, Brown, I got your name right.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you. Uh, yes, I would like to make a motion that we approve P dash oh oh four dash two oh, final plat for the, for the Heritage Village Phase One.
Thank you, sir, and, uh, Council Van Zee.
Thank you, Mayor, that's for a second.
Yes, we have second, go ahead, pressure your vote, please. Item number fourteen unanimous approval, and now we move number fifteen. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing and consider action on the application of Diane Kaufman for an amendment to ordinance O two thousand one eighty-five fifteen to allow for automobile and light truck repair in the M-two heavy industrial district locally known as thirty-eight oh eight and thirty-eight twelve Northeast Twenty-Eighth Street. The applicant requests approval of a conditional use permit to allow for automobile and light truck repair. This is an amendment to a two thousand one ordinance, which was for an automobile sales facility. The amendment would be to add the additional use to the conditional use permit that is currently in place. The reason the applicant is requesting the additional use is to allow the property to be used as an auto dealer who repairs their own vehicles. All the additional conditions the applicant has requested are listed in Exhibit A of the ordinance in the packet, which is patterned after the C-five development criteria. On January twenty-eighth, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request. There were none in favor, none opposed, and none returned to sender on the mailout. This is the property, thirty-eight oh eight, thirty-eight twelve. This is QT at Beach and Twenty-Eighth, and here's Ola. So this is the track layout. As you can see, this is the office or sales building of the car lot, and this is a, um, building in the back where they've done auto repair since, um, the Kaufmans have owned it. This is from Ola. They have a fence permit that, um, they're, uh, they're working on currently. All this will be the approach to the gate going into the back of the facility, and then this fence will be removed because, let me go back one. This property that is also owned by the Kaufmans is currently for sale, which has beach frontage. It's a through lot to Ola. All these vehicles are gone. This is all vacant land at this point, and as I mentioned on that, uh, next screen, this fencing will be removed. So what you were seeing is from this viewpoint is access to the gate going to this area back here, and that building is right here where they do the, uh, vehicle repair. So, um, that will be a concrete approach with concrete maneuvering surface or asphalt going to the drive gate. And there you can see where they've already started on the fence to divide off that property. This is facing south from Twenty-Eighth Street, facing north on the Fort Worth side, facing east towards Beach Street, and facing west to Fort Worth. Uh, again, this is from Google showing, um, the pictures with, with the water standing and all that was our pictures. This is from Google Map facing east. If you have any questions, I'm available, and the applicant is also here.
What, what kind of business before they close, you know? Remember?
Uh, it's an active business. It's a used car dealer, and they want to be able to do the same thing that, uh, vehicle sales that are in C-five zoning is work on their own inventory.
Okay, uh, Castle Van Zee.
Thank you, Mayor. That was my question, so there won't be outside vehicles brought in.
No, it's not open to the public. It's just for their inventory, and they do have a, um, conditional use from two thousand one for vehicle sales, because bear in mind, they're an M-two industrial use.
Okay. And can you tell me how long they've been in business?
I believe from their letter of intent, eighty-four, eighty-four.
Thank you for your business.
Castle Thompson?
Uh, will they be accepting, uh, cars that've been damaged or wrecked? Or is this just, uh, they go to auto sales and buy wholesale and they repair them?
I'll defer to Ms. Kaufman to respond to that.
Welcome here, ma'am. Go ahead, state your name and-
Diane Kaufman.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, there probably will be some disabled vehicles that will be towed in and to see if they can be fixed or worked on. It's kind of the nature of the used car business. Um, so they bring them in, they see if they can fix them, if they can't, they leave them, and probably every couple of months, three at the most, they have scrap yards come in, take out the things that can't be repaired, and the cycle goes on. But as an M-two, and my back lot is asphalted, so it is legal for them to have them back there.
Okay, will they be enclosed or will they be visible?
It's enclosed, totally enclosed from the front, sides, and back where the new fence is going.
What kind of new fence you have, like wood fence or?
It's eight-foot wood.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
Mm-mm. But, um-
This is the sales office, and there's fencing that goes across from the sales office to the property line.
Mm-hmm. And then in the back, it goes across, and we've already done the concrete drive and stuff up to there.
I just didn't give it-
We're just, no. I didn't either. We're still working on getting the gate and everything fixed, but it's going to be really nice. We're wanting to sell our property there next QT, so this has all been kind of a, a thing. And I don't know if y'all, probably none of y'all were here in two thousand and one when all of this happened, but changes in the zoning and everything. We'd been there since eighty-four doing business, repairing our cars, selling our cars and all of this. And when they changed the zoning and all, they told us we had to get a conditional use permit to continue doing business. So we said, okay. So we did. And apparently, there's a big difference between an auto sales facility and auto sales facility that does repairs. It became a very distinctive thing, not just in Halton City, but also in Fort Worth. And so we come here fifteen years later, and here we are. I have to amend the conditional use to continue. We've been doing repairs. We didn't know that it wasn't part of it. So we're just trying to get everything nice and set in stone and keep doing business.
I know that you said that you've been doing repairs and all this through this whole time. How do you handle your liquids? And what do you do with tires and things of that nature that?
Well, yeah. Tires have to be disposed of special, you know, you have to take them and pay to get rid of them. Uh, oil and stuff like that, there's two big oil containers that are there that are emptied on a regular basis.
About what time period are you talking about? Two weeks, a month?
On the oil containers? I really don't know. We, we don't operate the business any longer. It's now a rental property that we own. We closed our business two years ago, and so I don't know some of that detail. I know that I was there and they just emptied, I would say that they probably empty them at least twice a month.
Okay. And then the tires, uh, how much did they let it build up before the tires are removed?
Uh, there's not any there right now. Um, I, tires weren't an issue.
Okay.
You know, some parts were an issue, but they have a truck that they keep all that loaded on, and they take it about once every week or two.
Okay.
To get rid of that.
Well, thank you very much for your interest in our city.
Castle Salt.
It's been home a long time. We also live in Halton City, in case that helps.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, from the looks of the picture, your property appears to be very well-kept.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, my, my question is, in the last couple of years, have you received any code violations for a business?
No.
Such as this?
No, not until the most recent ones.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what spurred this.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more question? At this time, I open public hearing at, uh, eight thirty, uh, eight. Anyone in area would like to speak again, decide a number. I see none, so I, Chloe, the public hearing at the same time. At this time, uh, Castle, are you ready to make motion, then Castleman Wees? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. And the matter of ordinance O dash two zero two zero dash zero zero seven dash one five, which includes CU dash zero zero three dash two zero, make a motion that we approve this on the first reading.
Thank you, sir, and, uh, Castle Water Grow.
That's for a second, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. We got a second, please pressure your vote. Item number fifteen unanimous approval, and now we move to next item sixteen, staff report on the water utility billing update. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the utility billing staff has been working very, very hard, and they have built all four cycles twice now. Um, in doing that, we're preparing for some changes to come later where we eventually want to move to, uh, two cycles instead of four. And so some of the operational changes we're making as we are going to move from a four due date to a two due date, so, um, cycles one and four will have a new date of the fifth of each month. Cycles two and three will have a new due date of the twentieth of each month. And beginning on February the eighteenth, we will begin adding penalties once again, and then we will begin cutoffs the first week of March. Uh, we are, we do still have various forms of payment options. We have recurring credit card payment options that can be done on the website where the customer normally pays their payment online. And we can also set up bank draft or ACH, uh, if customers bring in a voided check to us here in our, uh, office. I, I just want to also take this opportunity to commend the staff that's worked so hard, uh, from the entire staff, Selena Macbeth, who's managing the department, our field guys, David, Craig, and Cody, they've really worked hard to get reads and, uh, back to us in timely manner. And I especially want to commend Janine Huffick, Erin Trish Kinzer, who have worked countless hours to make sure this billing got out and caught up as needed, and that's all I have.
When you mentioned Cody, you mean the chief, right? Or different?
It's a different Cody this time.
By the way, you know, I've been here most every day, from the time the fountain closed until now, and I look at most of people happy. I did not hear any people raising voice. I feel our online, you know, auto pay easy, and my water's still running. Thank you very much. I appreciate all your staff doing that. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, you have question, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Van Zee.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I echo the thanks because it's been, um, it's been really good and especially catching up on those. My question was, uh, refresh my memory, were we going to remove some service charges for credit card?
We are still not charging for credit cards, and we actually are going to bring a change in that, uh, at the next council meeting. We're actually going to bring that before you, and we're going to be asking to remove the two dollar and fifty cent, uh, convenience fee for online and by phone payments.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Castle Man Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, what was my two question, Sedan, two questions. Like, I only, I've had one bill since the change, and it was for fifty-four days. Him, when will I start getting regular bills?
Yeah, so the billing now should be current and caught up, so your next bill should be accurate in the days of your read, so-
Okay.
Right at thirty.
Okay, and then, uh, secondly, there's not going to be any, there's not going to be any problem with the averaging, because this is the, they couldn't have hit us at a worse time, I guess, but this is the month that we average our sewer bill, and that will be done accurately, and everyone, no one will have a problem?
Absolutely. We can run reports to look at those, uh, based on numbers of days, and so it, it does not affect our sewer averaging periods at all.
So I, when can I start flushing my commotes again? So, it was very la, I'm joking. Very last thing, uh, the little mailbox over on the side, uh, I've always just paid my bills in person, drop, you know, because I don't live that far. I dropped it in that slot the other day. That is a working slot, correct?
It is a working slot, yes. That's our night drop.
Do you think we'll ever put, that's kind of hard. Do you think we'll ever put the little mailbox back up out there again, or?
Uh, the slot comes directly into-
Uh, the slot comes directly into the building, and so we're able to access those payments throughout the day.
Okay, thank you so much for your hard work, the staff, everyone involved in this deal, this.
I appreciate that.
I don't think we could've, they could've hit us at a worse time for averaging all that stuff. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank, thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. I wish everyone coming here was happy, you know, we do business together, especially, you know, facial expression, body language, and we have fun, right? Don't be mean. I like it. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Now, we move to number seventeen, discuss on a future agenda. Council, you have anything to put it on? I see none, so I go to number eighteen, resignation of board commission and committee members. Anyone have anyone reside or withdraw? No. At this time, we go to appointment, reappointment of board commission committee. Councilman Grow, not Brown, Grow.
And Ms. Mayor, I would like to appoint Keith Lane to Place Two on the CCPD red light. We probably need to change that because since the red light cameras are no longer a thing, probably just to make it back CCPD, but Keith Lane, his application's on file.
Keedland?
Yep, Keith Lane, I think he, I think he's well-qualified to be able to-
You didn't appoint him for a police shift? Okay. Red light camera. You did better than him.
I know what you drive.
Okay. You have to. Go ahead, please, Russia, your vote for Mr. Keedland. And unanimous approve, thank you, any more from Council? If you don't have one, the one, the next one, excuse absent of Councilmember, Ms. Marion Hillier. She just had a doctor upon one show she could not be here, and I would like to, Council, excuse her from. Councilman Brand Weiss?
Motion to approve that absence.
Councilman Z.
Thank you, Mayor, that's for a second.
We got it. Please, Russia, your vote. Unanimous approve, item number twenty. Now, we already have executive session, and this time eight forty-five. I will join the meeting, see you next time. Have a good day, ma'am, all of you.